What is today's date, thirteen, isn't it?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. I'd like to open this, planning commission, Oak Park Planning Commission for July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Chairperson Torgo, vice chairperson Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Yes.
Commissioner Iselman.
Yes.
Commissioner McClellan.
Yes.
Commissioner Seligson.
Yes.
Commissioner Teacatch.
Yes.
Commissioner Tungate, Commissioner Walters Gill.
We have a call. Moving on to the approval of the agenda from seven fourteen, two thousand and twenty. Today is the fourteen. Oh, that day is the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections? No corrections, do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to planning commission meeting minute, I got that. Communication correspondence. Administrative approval of Total Package Towing LLC. Twenty-one six oh one Republic Avenue. Who will take us through this line, or?
Yes, this is administrative approval for operating a towing facility. All towed and inoperable vehicles will be stored indoor. The site plan submitted meets the zoning ordinance requirement. And it was approved with the conditions as outlined in the administrative approval.
Any question? Any question? No remark? Do you need any approval from us?
No.
If you do not. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. The following, what am I reading? Follow is routine items. The City of Detroit amendment to the master plan. We sent, I saw a letter that we sent back to them. Do you need anything from us on that? No, we just received it?
We received it and there is a letter of support that we recommend to send to approve. We don't have any comments about it.
Okay, do we need to give you an approval?
We need a motion, yes.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? You need a roll call or we can deal with all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Moving down to matters of consideration, new business. Site plan review. Hubble Development, two oh seven hundred Hubble Avenue.
The applicant proposed to build an addition of twenty-two thousand square feet of a warehouse to the existing building. The applicant proposed to improve the site with landscaping, greenbelt and additional landscaping. The, the site plan meets the zoning ordinance requirement. The only thing that is needed is the total setback of the site setback does not meet the zoning ordinance requirement. So the applicant has submitted a zoning board of appeals request. And the meeting is scheduled for July twenty-ninth. And we recommend approving the site plan review with the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Do we have anyone here from them representing?
Yeah, we have Mark, Michael and Peter from Design House.
Okay. Do you have any questions from Mark? Mark, would you come up, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
Mike Pizzola, Design House Architecture, thirty-three hundred Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan, here to speak about twenty-seven oh seven hundred Oak Park Avenue.
And you accompanied by?
Good evening, I'm Wayne Wadika with Huntington Cleaners and C R D N, four seven three Purdon Avenue, Birmingham. Nice to see you all.
Very good. Do we have any questions for?
Can you explain what you're going to be doing? It looks like it's a million dollar investment.
Sure. On behalf of Mr. Rakuta, he approached us to pursue the expansion of his existing facility on Oak Park Avenue. With that, we studied the zoning and the best we could. And with his needs, we proposed through some, a different addition, extending more towards the hotel to the east. I'm sure if you're all familiar with the property, the, the location of it. There's a hotel directly to the east. And we were, we were originally wanted to go to that, as far as we could, to that setback or to that property line with that, with that zero setback. But we were requested to provide a fire access around that backside. With that, we reduced the width of the building to allow for that fire access, which reduced the shape of the building. So what we had to do is we kind of had to stretch it out to make up for the, and square footage necessary for the required addition. Also with that was kind of logistics. We wanted the building to line up with the existing building on the north. And because of that, that kind of limited our setback, our setback areas. So to get the, the necessary amount of building addition, we simply extended to the south as far as we could, creating a setback issue, which we will address end of this month. But other than that, we're proposing a thirty-five foot addition to match the existing building. We're going to propose some modest landscape improvements the best we could, frontage landscape and some parking lot buffering. There'll be a thirty, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five foot fire access around the rear of the, rear of the building to the east, as requested by the fire marshal. With that, we'll propose a, a grid paper system, which will be pervious and still allow for fire department access for that backside for the addition. Parking has been met with minimum, we actually have, I believe, four, three or four spaces extra. Bike spaces are proposed, loading spaces are proposed to meet minimum requirements. Anything, you know, building wise will, those that match the existing facade with metal panel and masonry, a block. Anything else with the operations or addition, Lynn could answer, so anything else, we're here to answer.
Thank you, sir. If the zoning commission doesn't approve it, does it come back to us, or?
It could.
It could potentially come back. If they do not approve it, they would probably need to amend the site plan layout.
Thank you both for coming in, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Any other comments? What do you need from us? You need a motion?
Do I approve the site plan?
So moved.
Second.
So moved with the conditions as stipulated by the city.
Second. Moving to second, we have a roll call, please.
Vice chairperson Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Yes.
Commissioner Iselman.
Yes.
Commissioner McClellan.
Yes.
Commissioner Seligson.
Yes.
Commissioner Teacatch.
Yes.
And Commissioner Walters Gill.
Thank you very much for coming in and being faithful to Oak Park. We appreciate your business and your continued doing the right things for us and making us better. Thank you. That takes care of our site plan review, yes? Okay, moving on to changes, the PC. Did I miss that? I said site plan review and you guys said yes. Oh, the second site plan. I'm sorry, I'm trying to hurry up because, you know, I've got my critic over here bothering me. Site plan review twenty-two oh seven oh, you know what I can do, I won't show up. Yeah, I know how to resign now, I saw that in there. Two seven. Two, oh yeah, two one four one oh Coolidge Highway, site plan review. Will you take us through this, please?
This is a site plan review for an outdoor storage of construction materials and equipment. It's an existing site, so the applicant doesn't propose to change anything to the site. Usually it's administrative review, but because the applicant is requesting to change the front screen wall, the concrete wall, to landscaping buffer, that's required the planning commission approval, because the planning commission has the authority to approve alternative to screening. The site plan meets the zoning ordinance requirements and we recommend approval for the site plan with the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
So you're suggesting we go ahead with this?
Yes.
Even though those plants won't grow for a long time?
No, it has to be, at the time of planting, it has to be six feet, the same height of the screen wall. And that you have approved as a planning commission. Many alternative, we encourage landscaping buffers instead of the screen wall.
You need a vote from us?
Yes.
Do I need a motion? Been moved in second. It's been moved in second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Yes.
Commissioner Iselman.
Yes.
Commissioner McClellan.
Yes.
Commissioner Seligson. Commissioner Teacatch.
Yes.
Commissioner Walters Gill.
Yes.
Vice chairperson Brown.
Motion, yes, it's, okay. Now I'm to item three. And, oh, he's there.
Yes, Chris.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You have a good evening. Changes to the PC bylaws. PC for planning commission bylaws. Proposed new date and time. Shall we start this?
So at our last meeting, we discussed changing the time to be before the city council meeting, either at the first or third Monday of the month. And we proposed it to be at six P M. The issue is that we have three members already served at the city council meeting, so it's going to be easier for them to attend the meeting. And that we said that we're going to come back with a proposal and discuss it with you.
Question. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
If, if there's something big, could we, that time meet at five instead of six? If there was something big on the agenda?
If there, if there was something big on the agenda, we could propose a new time, but it would have to be if all of the members could attend at that new time. And it has to be properly noticed ahead of time that we are meeting earlier than regularly scheduled as well.
Okay. The issue that I had, that I had brought up several times is I want to know who had accountability for the agenda. I'm being told that the Office of Economic Development has responsibility for the agenda. So they will be able to tell us whether or not we can get everything done in one hour because of the history that we had, but nowhere in the bylaws does it say who is responsible for the agenda. So in managing the agenda, I'm looking for something in the bylaws that does not confuse us because it says the chairman has a lot of responsibility.
Yeah, so if you look at the bylaws, section two point three describes the duties of the officers, talks about what the chairperson is responsible, the vice chair and the secretary. In none of those does it describe them being responsible for the agenda, although it does not specifically state who is in charge of putting the agenda together. It has always been part of our economic development and planning staff that has done that. If this board would like us to add that into our bylaws, that's something that we can certainly talk with our city attorneys and figure out where that would fit into this new bylaw.
Does anybody else agree? I understand, you know, we have a great chair with a whole lot of responsibility, but it eludes to, it's really him. And it is not. Because you guys prepare that for us and now you're making a judgment. And that judgment is what we can handle in an hour. And if we find something that we can't handle, you say that we can't handle it in an hour, then that necessitates another meeting being set up for whatever is going to fall off at the end.
That, that is correct. So it doesn't put the responsibility on the chairperson to do that. But this entire body, if we were to go over that hour and did not get through the entire agenda, we would schedule a date before the end of that meeting on when we would be coming back within seven days in order to hear that business.
But you see, the thing I'm struggling with is if we have business people come in here with the thought that they were going to be able to get their review done by the end of that hour, and they don't, we send them away. Because you're going to make a judgment for us, is what I understand. In making the agenda, you will tell us, you, this is what you believe we'll be able to handle in an hour, so we won't have that problem. That's what I'm trying to prevent.
Yeah, I don't anticipate us having that problem. I would say if we did have a big project that we think there would be maybe a lot of members of the public that were coming out to dispute it, that's usually what prolongs the project or, or meeting. We would probably reach out to all of the commission members and ask for a different date for the meeting, more of a special meeting as opposed to putting it on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Go, go ahead, please.
I, I apologize. I was just thinking about this, like, just looking into the future, if there is a public hearing, the chair has an excellent point. I don't think people will be very happy if we make the wrong judgment call. Furthermore, I foresee a potential issue if people will say, well, seven o'clock is more reasonable for the public to come in and present their views. Is it make sense possibly to have a scenario where if there is a public hearing, then it diverts to regular time, or is that going to be too confusing? Because I think that would alleviate a lot of our concerns.
Yeah, it would be too confusing. And part of it would be the city council meeting happens at seven o'clock, so we couldn't just extend it out. We would have to have a whole new set of dates. So changing the meeting date, the main focus was so that three of the members that do attend the council meeting wouldn't have to come to two meetings. So it was to help alleviate that. As, with your question, at six P M, easier for the public, there's a lot of communities out there that hold these meetings during the day. Six o'clock, I think, is totally reasonable for somebody to attend a meeting. It's, you know, after work hours and a lot of communities are doing this in the middle of the day, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but, but again, we have to think about Oak Park. And I'm still thinking about the fact that the chairman, yeah, we have an hour, the chairman doesn't have to show up, because I'm going to show up. You know, I'm the vice chair, that's my responsibility, I understand that. But we're still, if you see that's going to take us eight hours and we got something like we did when the senior system home, which got out of hand, because the people were just so adamant and it went on and on and on. Should we have something to develop that property, that will be a long meeting. And it might take a special meeting to get that done. I'm asking, who would take that responsibility? And I want something in there that says that you will.
Yeah, like I said, we would take that responsibility. We would be able to identify any projects that we think would be a longer meeting and schedule it as a special meeting. If you would like us, if everybody here would like us to add into the bylaws who's responsible for creating the agendas, we can certainly do that.
That's only my recommendation. Should we vote on that? I want a clear response, I want it spelled out for who is responsible. I don't want ever to come in here, I fight enough stuff with people, you know, who might not want us to do what we need to do. I just want to make sure that everybody is clear enough with it. They'll make the calls to you if they get bumped on the end of one that they want done right away. You'll supervise that. Okay, I want that in there. Do I have a recommendation? Go ahead.
It's just like, are you all in support of changing the date and the time? If we change the language, is that the only concern you have?
Let me open it up. Are there any other concerns that need to be voiced? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll have to resign because the time is inconvenient.
That's one. Any other comments? Seligson.
No, I, I'll play it by ear, but, you know, if anything becomes too onerous at any time, but that's been for like the last ten years. But I, I have no problem with your recommendation, I mean, nothing wrong with having change.
And making it more specific certainly can't hurt.
And anybody who reads through it, that, that's all I want them to do. They will know the proper people to go, they won't be looking for Gary to get them. They won't be looking for me, they never do. That's, that's, they know better than that. All I'm saying is that if we got a remedy, it's a remedy there for the meeting that goes too long. We understand how to do that. And it states it, but it doesn't state how, who manages that and who they should call. You're saying that if it's really important, they will come at you anyway, it is your responsibility. And that's the only reason why I want that verbiage in it.
Yeah, we can certainly work with our attorneys to craft something and bring it back to this board. Do you want to table this discussion as come back with the total revised document at the next meeting? Or do you want to approve it as is and we come back at the next meeting with the change outlining who's responsible for creating the agenda?
Are you asking me that?
I'm asking the entire board.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't just me.
So a motion would be very helpful.
Okay. Yes.
One thing that would be helpful to me in deciding, as, as the city manager and city clerks, are they agreeable that all the special meetings that city council has will be able to work with the schedule, like we'll be able to do the special meetings on that third Monday? They think they could, we could pull that off?
Yeah, we spoke with the city manager, Tungate. This was, I believe, brought up by him at the last meeting. He's in full support of it and believes we'll have ample opportunity to do special meetings on the first, like, we're doing, on the first Monday of the month.
Right, but there's members on this board that need to be there, so that's why I can't have them.
Personally, I think we can go ahead and vote on this.
Yes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, we have a second. It's been moved in second, may I have a roll call? We are deciding to do this and you're going to come back with the language from the attorney?
Yes.
Is that what we're voting on?
Correct.
Not.
With the proviso that they will come back with appropriate language from the attorney.
Is that what we're voting? Okay.
May, may I ask a question? I want to be clear that we're not voting on the date change, or are we?
We are.
We are.
We are approving the date change.
Approving the date change, including the addition of the language that we're talking about.
They're going to come back with the language.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification, but why do we have to approve the language? We basically, if we're approving it, we're approving it. Subject, I, I would say the approval is subject to the language that the city attorney comes up with. I mean, that's what we're doing, in fact.
Whatever language that the attorney comes back and tells us, we will still review it, but we can vote on to pass it now, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you for, thank you for the clarification. I have Iselman with the motion and McClellan with the second.
I need a roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Iselman.
Yes.
Commissioner McClellan.
Yes.
Commissioner Seligson.
Yes.
Commissioner Teacatch.
Yes.
Commissioner Walters Gill. Vice chairperson Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitehead.
Motion carries. Like pulling teeth, oh.
Master plan update.
Master plan update.
So we are initiating the process to update the master plan. Based on the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, it requires the municipalities to review the master plan every five years. The last update of the master plan was in twenty twenty and it's time to update the master plan. Also, the Michigan Enabling Act amendment in House Bill five 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 seven, it requires now to add a housing assessment to the master plan. And also, at the same time, we want to update the master plan to include a housing development within the city campus. So that's why we wanted to start the process of updating the master plan. We're working on finalizing a request for a proposal to hire a consultant. And we intend to submit the bid on July twenty-third, Wednesday, July twenty-third. We're going to come to you with update during the process, the entire process for the master plan update.
Very good. So I thought we had the public housing before. We did not?
No, what she's referring to is on our city campus, we are hoping to maybe include senior housing as we redevelop and doing the new community center on site. There could be ample space to do a senior housing project as well.
Okay. What's happening with that property over there that we?
It is for sale. It is for sale.
Is it something the city should move on? I'm just asking.
Not for the price they're asking, it's way overpriced.
Okay. The one we had, the room right over here on Oak Park Boulevard, on the other side of the church.
The old rectory building.
Right.
Yeah, we took action to tear down the building, though.
Where the grass is now, twelve inches high.
I drove by it today, I think they must have cut it since the last time you saw it, maybe.
I just drove by it myself.
Yeah, it didn't look twelve inches.
The curb is that bit. Okay, that's fine.
We'll check it again.
All right, thank you. What do you need from us?
Nothing, just for your information.
All right, very good, thank you. Any planning commission meeting members matters for discussion.
I don't know if it's related or not, but you can buy the Oak Park History book. I have them in my trunk. If you would like to donate twenty-five dollars to the library and get a copy of this book, meet me at the car.
What else is selling out in your trunk?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's interesting. That's interesting. And I'm in the book.
You know, the job doesn't pay very much, you know?
I mean, I don't get a copy, I got to pay for my copy. And I'm in the book.
I donated all thousand copies to the library. So when you pay your twenty-five dollars, it's not to me. All twenty-five dollars goes to the library.
Since they believe that, you know, I have that kind of money, yes, I will donate something to the library, I mean, that's fine, we're paying them enough tax, oh, never mind, don't get me started. mind, don't get me started.
Are you autographing copies?
Yes.
What else is selling out of the trunk is what I want to know.
Way to go, Seligson. No other further comments? Uh, Ms. Gill?
Yes.
You going to stay with us, please?
No, I'm going to resign.
Okay, I don't want that cash on. I had to get on Gary about that one. All right, Seligson, it was twenty-two minutes. Adjourned, thank you.